We have one member that we've heard from, but he's running late. That's Mr. Light. And then Mr. Henry is to be determined. But at this point, it's a few minutes after seven. So we're going to go ahead and call the order if anyone completes the 70. My pleasure.
I would just give the flag of the United States of America.
One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, our first item this evening. Watch out, the mics are on. The first item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda.
I move the adoption of the agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Ritter. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And then that takes us to the adoption of the minutes from the June 17th Planning Commission meeting. Does anyone have any changes or a motion?
The motion that we accept the minutes is, as they are presented.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins.
I second.
Thank you, Ms. Ritter. I do just see we need an aye in Jennifer Webb on page four. But, I mean, it's a small typo, but that's just one I just noticed. So we have a motion and a second to adopt the minutes from June. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That takes us to the first and only public hearing on the agenda this evening. The Vesta and Schned Tourist Home. Ms. Summers, if you would be so kind to queue that up for us.
Thank you. This is special exception 24-05-01. The applicant has applied for a one-bedroom tourist home for the property located at 3729 Sperryville Pike, identified by tax map number 38A, double circle one, lot 28. The property is 0.359 acres in size, and it is a village residential. The applicant is to operate a tourist home pursuant to 170 316 and 1666 K. They wish to use the existing barn home, which was approved as a family apartment, as a one-bedroom. And back in 2019, the owner at that time, Robert Chapman, obtained the special use permit for the barn to be converted into a family apartment with one bedroom. The health department commented the record showed the barn was renovated into a family apartment with one bedroom, a kitchen, and one and a half baths. The property consists of a Class 3B well. They had a flow rate of six gallons per minute. And that was back in 2000, when it was first constructed. They did not have any past or current records of any water quality tests that were conducted. The property is on public stewardship, so I reached out to the Rappahannock Sewer and Water Authority, and they approved it as a use for a tourist home with no additional changes to the EUs. BDOT commented that the property is currently being served by an existing entrance off Route 522, and parking is to the rear of the property. Based on their field observations, the existing entrance meets BDOT private entrance standard, and stopping site distance is adequate. Staff would recommend the following conditions: a maximum of one bedroom, two guests; no food service to be offered to renters of the facility; the permanent term of date upon sale or transfer of the property; the property may not be subleased, rented by third party, or used as a timeshare. Another condition that should be added to this permit is if it's recommended for approval is that a family apartment permit be voided. Or in order to keep what they're requiring, when the 2019 permit was issued with the stipulation of only families for two years, and being that the final inspection was done until April 28, 2023, that the owner may not rent, and the permit is not effective until April 28, 25. And this was advertised, as I'm aware, by 15.2204.
Thank you, Ms. Summers. Could you explain that last addition to the staff recommendations about voiding the family apartment?
So that permit, it could be a condition that that permit is voided, that they lose the use of that barn as a family apartment, or it could not be rented until those two years are up from when the final inspection was done.
Okay. All right. Well, I don't want to hold things up any longer, and I'm sure there will be discussion about this. So at this time, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on special exception 24-05-01, the Vesta and Schned Tourist Home. Are the applicants present? Did y'all want to say anything before the public comment? You're welcome to comment at this time.
Hello, good evening, everyone. Thank you for your time and consideration tonight. My name is Dan Schned. I'm the applicant. I'm here with my wife, Melissa Colgan, who's also a co-owner of the property. And as you can see, she's nine months pregnant and due in a couple of days with our first child. Hopefully, not the next couple of minutes, and we can kind of make it through the meeting. But if you do see me hustle out of here, you'll understand why. Hustle out of here. We, so I'm a federal employee. We've been, and Melissa owns her own interior design business. We've been living in the DC area for about 10 years and visiting the Shenandoah Valley and the park and the towns and villages around here for many years, and really fell in love with Sperryville quite a long time ago. And so we've been keeping our eyes peeled for listings for a long, long time, and we're overjoyed when this particular property came about, and we're ecstatic that we were able to purchase it. And since then, when we purchased it in November, I've actually been out here quite a bit and plan to be out here more. We're actually currently making some improvements to the main house, not the one that would be the subject of the tourist home, but just to make it a little more family-friendly. We're adding a nursery, just so that it's more comfortable for us to spend even more time out here. We do plan to be out here quite a bit. And we also, after the baby is born, plan to spend quite a bit of time out here and use the barn for family and friends to come and visit the child and, you know, enjoy Sperryville and host, you know, for us to host them for our own personal use of the barn. And then, you know, following that, we're requesting the special exception permit to be able to, you know, rent it sporadically in between our own personal use of the barn in particular. No intention of ours to, you know, full-time, short-term rental it. It would be, you know, just periodically in between our personal use. And primarily so that we, you know, can continue to kind of share the property with other people the way we were hosted and fell in love with Sperryville as well. Our intent would be to, when we do rent it, offer incentives or discounts for local businesses so that guests would be able to patronize our local businesses as well. So happy to take any, you know, any questions or respond to any comments, but thank you again for your time and consideration tonight. I also, the representative from Vesta here, who helped with the application, is able to respond as well if needed.
Sounds good. Ms. Ritter, are you okay with a public hearing at this time? No questions? Or maybe we should hear from the public first?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. And so at this point, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on the Vesta and Schned Tourist Home application. Anyone wishing to speak on this application? I ask that you approach the microphone, introduce yourself by name and the district in which you reside, and we do ask that you limit your comments to five minutes. And with that, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak?
My name is Karen Hunt, Jackson District. This application is problematic for a number of reasons. The application submission itself raises more questions than it answers. It is unclear if the person who completed the application actually read and understood what information was being requested and why. Page one of the application asks yes/no questions and has checkboxes provided for that purpose. Questions that have a one-inch box that says "answer" indicate some sort of definitive answer is sought, such as perhaps "will not impact" or "will be addressed by," or some such explanation to the questions being posed rather than just "yes." Questions on pages five through nine that require an explanation mostly note just "yes," which does not actually answer the questions asked. A question such as "access to the subject property" is looking for some descriptive explanation, not just "yes." When the application asks, "Do you offer conditions and restrictions for the following?" and the answer is "yes" and nothing else, what exactly is being offered here as mitigation measures? The response to hours of operation is 24/7, and leaves me wondering what is actually intended here. The original application submission listed the number of bedroom guests as two rooms, four guests, while the staff report noted a maximum of one bedroom, two guests. It should not require a citizen questioning discrepancies to get clarification and a subsequent correction from an applicant on the day prior to a public meeting. The family apartment, which is the dwelling under consideration here, was constructed by the previous owner, Robert Chapman, and was approved as a one-bedroom. On the sketch included with the May 8, 2019, family apartment special use permit application, there is a study noted among the listed rooms. I wonder if whoever completed the application thought they could utilize that space, or maybe the separate workshop, as additional sleeping accommodations for guests. The front Royal Police Department is not in Washington, Virginia, and the closest hospital is not Rappahannock General in Tappahannock. However, all of that is really besides the point because the application does not meet our county requirements. Section 172, 170-62G lays out the additional standards for family apartments. In particular, number two states, "The apartment may not be rented to anyone other than a family member for a period of two years following the completion thereof. The final building inspection was performed on April 28, 2023. The certificate of occupancy was issued on the same date. I've provided copies of those documents to the Planning Commission members for reference." The purpose of additional standards for family apartments, which the Planning Commission is well aware is not a by right use, is to ensure that they are truly intended for family use and not used as an end run around other provisions of our zoning ordinance. The additional standard that they can only be rented to family members for at least two years after construction has been completed, again, following completion thereof, is a small effort to try to address exactly this sort of thing. This property was sold to the current owners roughly six months after the family apartment was approved for occupancy on November 8 of 23. This tourist home application was submitted April 5 of 2024, five months later. Whatever the rationale of the applicant, I'm not sure this application should have been accepted for consideration. Even without considering other issues regarding adverse impacts on neighbors, this application clearly conflicts with the nature and intent of section 170-62G2, and I don't see how it can be approved. And I completely disagree with the staff recommendation that you can void a family apartment special use permit after it's already been built. What is the point, then, of our ordinance? I respectfully ask that the Planning Commission recommend denial. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Are you party to the application? Yes. And your name's on the application, or your company's name is on the application?
I'm Vesta.
You will have an opportunity to speak after the public hearing is closed. We certainly want to hear from everyone, but this is the opportunity for the public in particular to speak, and not intended to be a back-and-forth between the public and the applicant. Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, Ms. Bruce.
I'm Diane Bruce, Sperryville, Virginia. I was going to speak on all of the exact same things that she has just mentioned about the application and how poorly prepared that it was. The two-year restriction on renting it, I think, still stands, but someone just said that the Planning Commission or the Board of Supervisors may have the authority to abandon that. I don't know if that's the case or not. I don't know if a condition is applied if you have the authority to abandon it. I think you'd better check on that. I noticed some of the same oddities that Karen mentioned. And I would also, I know Vesta has another application on your agenda tonight. You might want to look at that application. I did, and it is similarly filled in. Now, I know you addressed this other application in Flint Hill last month, and you tabled it. But take a look at that application. The other thing that's interesting about the application is it's signed by Vesta, but it's owned by somebody else. So can a management company make an application, or does the owner have to make an application? In giving notice to the neighbors, another little thing I saw was, in addition to what she mentioned, is one of the places they gave notice to was the Chesapeake Telephone Company. I don't think there is such a telephone company. Certainly, I don't think there's one in Sperryville. But they gave a Washington DC address, so whatever they were trying to notify did not get notice of this application. One of the things that worries me about this application is that there are no sidewalks in Sperryville and up there at that intersection or close to that intersection. You know, these guests are going to come out and walk up to the corner store. They're going to walk to before and after. They're going to walk all around. They have no idea what it's going to be like. It is dangerous. I try to walk up and down the street, but I get off when a car comes by, and then I get back on the shoulder because the traffic doesn't slow down. So I would worry about the people who rent it that become pedestrians. But the biggest thing I really worry about is commercial creep. The barn is a barn. It's a big building. It's not just a house. And what might come next? After a year or two of using it this way, might you see an application come in to say, "Oh, we want two bedrooms and four guests," or "We want three bedrooms and six guests," or "Maybe we want two different units entirely." Or maybe they will come in and say, "We would like to turn the whole facility into a pool hall, or game room, or a bar, or a cafe." So once this commercial activity gets into a village residential activity, does it open the door and put the pressure on you and the Board of Supervisors in the future with other kinds of applications that may be forthcoming? And I call to your attention, as you have heard me numerous times before, Harmony Manor. That building, when that house was built, the current Board of Supervisors called that man in and said, "You cannot use it for a venue." He went back and continued to use it. We called him in again. "You cannot use it for a venue for weddings or whatever." He went back and continued to do it, and then he sold it. Somebody else bought it. They got a different Board of Supervisors, I guess, gave him a permit for a two-bedroom B&amp;B. They got divorced, and somebody else bought it, and they got a permit for a three- or four-bedroom B&amp;B. And then now what's up there? Conference center, winery, bar, outdoor music, frisbee golf, or whatever they call it. There's all kinds of things in what, in the area and the property owned by, built to be just a person's home. That's what I call commercial creep. The other one is Blue Rock. The former owner built that house over there for her residence. She never lived in it. The new owner has come in and convinced the Board of Supervisors to turn it into, I don't know if it's a B&amp;B or a tourist home, big, massive thing that was only permitted to be a private home. The third thing that's more recent is Canineology. I remember when that was just a little gas station, and when they retired and sold it, and it was grandfathered in with the zoning ordinance, and when they retired and sold it, it was grandfathered in commercial as to the footprint. Current, next owner needed a little more space to park in the back. They got some additional zoning, commercial zoning. Next owner came along, they got some more. Last owner came along, they got some more. Commercial creep. That's what I fear will happen with this particular property. I know that we have tourist homes in village residential. You certainly have them up in your area. But I worry about this because it's such a big building. It doesn't have to just be a house. It doesn't have to just be a rental.
Diane, I'm sorry to interrupt.
My five minutes are up.
Yes, I'm so sorry. You know, we're happy to keep an eye on that more and more, and I know you understand.
Well, and I thought it was three minutes, and you said five a while ago. Okay, well anyhow, I hope that you will deny recommending this to the Board of Supervisors. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Anyone else wishing to speak?
I'm Frances Dotson, Sperryville, and they're backdoor neighbor, and I want to oppose ditto to what Karen and Diane has said. My problem is the noise. Are the guests going to come and play loud music? Is the vehicles going to get to her, there'll be more than one or two? And I will say, if so, a privacy fence will be put up at your expense.
Please do address your comments to the commissioner.
Okay, then a privacy fence will be put up at their expense.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? This is a public hearing for the Schned Tourist Home, if you'd like to speak on it. If there's no other members of the public wishing to speak, I'll go ahead and declare the public hearing closed. This will certainly be an opportunity for you to follow up with your comments.
Hi, good evening. My name is Mandy Palmer. I'm with Vesta. We're helping this family with their application. I filled out the application. The reason some of the questions were like that is because we also provided what we call a property management plan that also answered a lot of those questions. The reason 24/7 is listed is just because in the event that they're not home, they have the ability to contract us to be available 24/7. So with that, we have someone watch, obviously, guests and hosts messaging 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We have a maintenance staff that is on call for the same timeframe, so in the event they had an emergency, we would just be able to get someone out there. In regards to the four-to-two, there is a loft that's like a sitting area. Our original thought was like, if a couple comes and they have a nine or 10-year-old kid to enjoy local attractions, we could put some type of bedding up there for them. But we understand that it's a one-bedroom, two guests, which should also take care of any issues in regards to traffic. We, obviously, when we put things online, we can only offer to two guests, or he will only be able to offer to two guests as well. You have to approve those guests. There's background checks done on them. They're required to follow the same noise ordinances as anyone else would be in the county, or the police would be called, just like if a long-term resident or someone who owns their home would do the same. So I apologize if the application wasn't clear. I didn't know that they wouldn't get a copy of the property management plan that way. And in regards to the numbers, we're happy to update them or any other simple things that we can adjust, just to show that we wish to be compliant with the board, the county, the surrounding neighbors and residents, and aren't interested in being a commercial anything.
Thank you. Commissioners, have questions or comments?
I have a couple of questions, since it's a P1. The hours of operation, I know we briefly talked about it, you said 24/7.
I'm sorry, whoever answers the questions will need to use the microphone for the purposes of the minutes.
You, on the application, it says 24/7.
Yes.
And typically, I know what 24/7 means. How would you explain that to me? What is 24/7?
Obviously, if someone's staying there, they're going to be there for a 24-hour period. So I didn't want it to be like deceitful and thinking that we were just renting it to them for the day, and they weren't overnighters. 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So that also means that we have someone available 24 hours a day, seven days a week from our staff if we're contracted to do so.
And I'll ask this question. How long can it be rented?
It has to be less than 30 days. It can only be for two people. On average, a guest will stay from a Friday to a Monday. We actually entertain like a lot of traveling nurses that come to the area sometimes, so if we do get a longer stay, it's usually because it's someone working in the area, such as a traveling nurse or someone who's been contracted for the parks or something during the summer.
So it'd be less than 30 days, correct?
Yeah, absolutely.
And so, in theory, I could rent from the 1st of July to the 29th.
In theory, you could, yes, because it's under 30 days.
And then I could flip it around, 29th through the, of July now through the, whatever, 27th of August. I mean, I could go back-to-back with this.
You can't go back-to-back with us, so we actually require...
I mean, be a different, different, different renter, different renter, but, I mean, that block for 29 days, and then the very next day, I could have another renter in for 29 days, correct?
That is correct, except for the only exceptions to that is that we do require 48 hours in between each guest, so it couldn't be essentially back-to-back, the way you're stating. But yes, the definition of a short term is anything under 30 days, so obviously, they're allowed to book up to 30 days, which is extremely rare.
Okay. Ms. Summers, the original permit for a one-bedroom was given to the previous owner, correct?
Correct.
All right. So typically with a, I've got a couple of thoughts in my head, so bear with me. But typically, like an Airbnb, that would terminate on sale, but with, as a mother-in-law residence or whatever, that doesn't terminate, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So the sale was, in effect, the occupancy was, what was the date?
April 2023.
April 2023. So that was for two years. So that would be April of 2025, then, before that expired.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. That answers my questions. I'm kind of torn, but based, get the clarification on this, that this really doesn't expire till the, or the 2025. I'd have a harder time supporting this, but that's just me. That's, that answers my questions, but thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else?
I feel that we're here prematurely. It feels like we're here a year or two early. Think we need to go down rabbit holes with everything else at this point.
Well, I mean, I agree with you. It's a, I don't know that at this point we can put the toothpaste back in the tube and say, "Hey, this was never an accessory dwelling unit or a family apartment," as it were at the time it was granted, because that was a matter before, I think the BCA granted that permit. So that would have been a matter for the BCA to decide, and we are not privy to legal counsel. We don't have a lawyer at our on-call this evening, so I don't see how we could void or make a recommendation to void that permit. I was aware of those goings-on in 2019. I was on, of the board's appointee to this body, and I'll tell you, from my perspective, my recollection of the family apartment discussion was that it was very clear that this conversion was intended to be a residence for a family member. And we've heard from the applicants this evening that they still intend to have family come and stay in this building. So it seems like it will still be used as a family apartment or an accessory dwelling unit. So then how do we put the toothpaste back in the tube and void that and suddenly make it something else?
I guess my only request on that would be if we do have to wait to that said date. Like, is there a way that we can still move forward the conditional use, and you guys can just date it to not be used until that date?
I don't think that we can do that. I mean, there's not an expiration date for this body. this body to conclude the business, is there, Michelle?
I'm sorry, I was trying to get back on the...
We can continue to hear this application until 2025. But the Board of Supervisors has to dispatch in 90 days. Is that correct? So I don't know how fair that is, because as someone who sat on the body that approved it, or recommended approval for a residential use, I'll just have to tell you, I'm not a member at Sperryville Methodist Church, but I have attended Sperryville Methodist Church on many occasions, and that's your immediate neighbor. And I often sat in that church for service while that property was being renovated, and it's very loud, what goes on on that property, hearing it inside that old church. And I often wanted the ground to swallow me up as I sat in the church, listening to the renovation next door on Sunday morning. But I think people were very understanding because it was a residence for someone's mother to visit them and have a family bond. I don't think that this additional level of tourist home would meet that, would meet that same kind of reception.
I guess my question to that would be, were the renovations what were allowed, or was the person occupying the unit loud? Because the renovations are completed.
She wouldn't have been allowed to occupy it until April 2023, when the renovation was complete.
Understood.
And if you take into that the additional standards for tourist homes, which I refreshed myself on last night, when we were, when I was looking at the two-year language to assure myself that this application was received correctly, when I was reviewing the additional standards for tourist homes, and bed and breakfast, it says very specifically, "In residential and resource preservation zoning districts, any buildings to be constructed shall not be more than two stories high and have the exterior appearance of a single-family residence and normal residential accessory structures." Well, from all accounts, and from everything in the history of this building, it was a barn, which is an agricultural structure. It's not a residential structure.
But was approved to be a family apartment, correct?
It was approved to be an accessory dwelling. It was not approved to be a bed and breakfast or a tourist home, which is what this additional standard raises. So
Understood.
From my perspective, I don't see how I put the toothpaste back in the tube and approve this for a tourist home, when it states very clearly that it should have the appearance of a residential building. And this does not have the appearance of a residential building. It has the appearance of an agricultural building. I will say, in addition to the noise, I believe this building is on a very flat lot in the center of town. It is this tall building. I don't see how it could be effectively screened without creating an eyesore, and...
Can you define screened? I'm so sorry. I just didn't know what you meant by that.
Well, some of the other permits that have been issued in the village on side streets have asked for screening on the properties, plantings or fences or walls. And I don't see how we could ask for anything of that nature when this building is so tall, and any screening would be more of an intrusion than a screening. And we had this discussion recently with a building up in Chester Gap, where the elevations led to the same kind of challenges. Screening just effectively wasn't possible, or not a scenario that could be entertained. So I guess for all of those reasons, I believe that we could either table this indefinitely, or we could recommend denial. And I'm really at the, at the preference of my fellow commissioners.
Thank you for your time, all of you. We really appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Would you like to hear additional thoughts?
Yes, always.
Yeah, okay. To me, there are some, I'm not going to comment on things that have already been discussed, but to me, this has the characteristics of the Chester Gap one, where the configuration of the house with respect to the neighboring properties is especially sensitive, given the scale and proximity, lack of entrance and exit, and just the uniqueness of the neighborhood. Being on the commission at the time, we approved the family subdivision. I absolutely expected this day to come. I have to say that. It's no fault of yours, and certainly you had nothing to do with that, and I'm sorry that you're, in a sense, victims of that. But it's not appropriate there, in my view, even if the permit were, the timing were right, and the building, it's just, it's a, it's, it's, that location with that intimate connection to the properties around it is not suitable, in my opinion, for unfamiliar guests to be coming and going all the time. That would, without question, put an additional burden on the neighboring properties, be it noise, or just wandering people, wondering, where is, this is an interesting, strange structure. I just don't think it's the right use, and I wouldn't want to sort of encourage you to think, oh, well, we'll just wait a year and come back, because if I'm still here, I'm going to have the same feelings then.
And I would share that sentiment. You know, very similar to some of the other properties that have been discussed, you know, you all purchased a property and may not have been aware of all the discussion regarding this property prior to your purchase. And, you know, we do appreciate that maybe, maybe you weren't aware of all those factors.
So with respect to the, you know, I, I'm tempted to suggest that we recommend denial, but I don't know that we could cite the applica, if we could do so without citing the application abnormalities that I think are more of a legal issue that we don't really know. I'm not sure that I want to recommend that. I think we're at a bit of a disadvantage. I don't know if we could get some further respect on that. But I would be comfortable recommending denial without consideration of, of those, you know, the past permit and the family unit, simply on the basis of the appropriateness of the use and the location.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins. Did you want to say something?
Yes. This, to me, with all the other comments, that adds up pretty much to, this looks like a denial recommendation to me. But I want to make a comment with reference to subdivisions. Yes, we have, this body has approved tourist homes in a subdivision, but not all of us members on this, on this board has been in agreement with that. I, for one, have never been in agreement that a tourist home fits right in a subdivision. And this, at Sperryville, your location, it's not, it's not classified as a subdivision, but to me, it has very similarities of the subdivision, because you're right in the hub of the most families living in Sperryville. And I, I have concerns with tourist homes, people coming and going in these locations. The other, the reason that I say, the most, there's not very many family homes left in Sperryville, because we've been, Sperryville has been torn apart by investors coming, buying up houses, turning them into shops, businesses. Therefore, we have no rental properties or no houses left in Sperryville for our families to be able to occupy. So I've said all that to say, I could not support recommending approval of this. My support goes to denial.
Mr. Atkins?
I think, I have a bit of problem with the application itself, just because it is, even if you look at the state, the letter, the property management letter, it doesn't actually address a number of these questions very specifically, like, for instance, lighting, or, you know, what kind of impact it's going to have on, on the area and with regards to the neighbors who are, like, for instance, the sound, I know you have in your, in your property management papers, you have something about occupants, even two vehicles or four occupants or one, but you don't address the issue of, you know, where are these vehicles going to be with regards to this property and the adjoining property. So that's one problem. But the, my main problem is that when this was permitted as a family apartment, the permit says that you can't rent it to anybody other than a family member for two years. And if we permit that, then all we're doing is telling people, okay, you know, you can, you can get the permit for your family apartment, and next year you go ahead and sell it, and it will have an increased value because it has this apartment, but you are only permitted to have a family member there, yet you're, you're realizing the increased value when you wouldn't otherwise have been permitted to have the apartment. And that just seems like a crazy way to interpret these standards. I just think you have to, you have to see that the property was subject to that restriction. I mean, you can rent it to a family member, but I don't see how you can rent it to other people. That's my opinion. So I guess I would deny the application.
So maybe in the interest of progress and not dragging these nice folks through more of this, I'd like to move that we recommend denial on the basis of the restrictions associated with the family apartment and the incompatibility, or the finding of a lack of compatibility for the impact on the close proximity of the, the density of the neighborhood.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins. Any further discussion?
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Atkins. We have a motion and a second. Anyone else? All right, with that, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, thank you. Next up will be the Board of Supervisors. You're welcome to stay, if you'd like. All right, then, that takes us to the next item on the agenda, public comment. Anyone wishing to speak, please come to the microphone, identify yourself by name and the district in which you reside, and I ask again that you keep your comments for five minutes. This is your opportunity to speak on any of the items on the agenda. Anyone wishing to speak? Yes, here's Bruce.
Diane Bruce, Sperryville. I'm curious to know that when the two years is up on the restriction for rental, can that property then be rented to anybody for any period of time? It could be a long-term rental, it could be a 30-day rental, without having any other applications?
Look, it still couldn't be a tourist home.
Couldn't be a tourist home, right.
Could not without another application, but it, but it could be rented to somebody.
Right.
Long-term rental.
Yeah, okay. I thought so, but I was just curious. Thank you.
Hey, Gary? Yes, sir.
I am Joseph Fados. I reside at 882 Futterstock Road in Flint Hill. I'm here as a representative from the RLEP to provide some comments on the contractor yard revisions. Rick Kohler, my colleague and president of RLEP, sent in to Supervisor Smith and Ms. Summers earlier today, a number of areas in the proposed revisions that we would ask that you consider tightening up a little bit more. And I'll just quickly go through them, but Rick's email listed them all. One would be, should the Level 2 contractor yard be allowed in any resource preservation zone? Is the distinction between the Level 1 and Level 2 contractor yard clear, clear enough? We'd ask that you look at the setbacks from the road and from adjacent properties. We'd also request that you look at the screening requirements, and are they stringent enough? In terms of minimum lot size, we'd ask you to consider whether the lot sizes described in the revised, or the revisions adequate. Also, the number of vehicles that are stated would be allowed, we think, are a lot and should be reduced. Also, lighting standards for any contractor yard, we'd ask that you put in some additional language there. And then also, we did not see any environmental protections for leaks and spills, and would ask that some further language be added there. And finally, there are a number of areas where the decision of the zoning administrator is, is required, and we would ask that those decisions be based on clear and specific criteria, so that it's more of an objective decision. But that, that's really it. We appreciate the work you're doing on that, and we'd be happy to send some specific language suggestions, if you would like. But you may have seen Rick's email, it came in a little late today, but you could take a look at it and, and think about our request. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, and with that, I'll go ahead, oh, yes, John, follow me.
John Capielli Hampton. You all know that I've been very concerned with the contractors' yards regulations, and I was thinking about them, and I agree with the gentleman that was just up on most of what he had to say. I think the minimum lot restrictions for the Type 1 contractor's yard should be looked at, in that there's a lot of fellows that are contractors, that are HVAC guys, or landscapers, so on and so forth, that don't have a lot of equipment, and they're renting on small pieces of property. So when you're talking about 900 feet or 1,000 feet off of the road, if they're on a three-acre lot that they're renting, or that they own, 900 feet isn't going to do it. I agree with screening, I agree with setting it back as far as possible, but something should be at that. The other thing, as in my own case, which has already happened, there is a value to the county. I hear a lot of people talk about agricultural land and not helping our tax base. My property has already, because I already have a permit, we've already built our contractor's yard, lost its tax advantage for the agricultural zone for that two acres, and I've already paid five years of rollback taxes on that contractor's yard plot. I saw it as a necessary evil that had to go, you know? If it's not being used for agriculture, it's going to be used in my contractor's yard. I need to pay the rollback taxes, which I did, no argument. And I think that these contractor's yards, not only, as some of you have already heard from me, about permitting, the people that are going to be doing it have to have a state-issued license as a contractor, and that their permit application should be only for what they are licensed for. You're not going to have a plumber who's going to have a bunch of truck to trailers in there with lumber trucks, because one doesn't go over with the other. But that, that area, being looked at by the tax assessor to actually change the tax rate for that contractor's yard... change the tax rate for that contractor's yard from residential or agricultural to, sorry, to a commercial rate for that amount of area, whether it be 10,000 square feet or 20,000 square feet, or whatever it may be. In my case, it's two acres. So that, that is done. There's a long list of things, and I have offered to, as a member of the business community in the county now coming on 10 years, to help write the regulation itself. I know all the past, that seems odd, but I'm more than happy to do it. That's pretty much the majority of it. And one little thing, the apartment, if you've got an apartment, you're still going to have people coming in and out. There is no noise ordinance in the county, because anybody would get shot if they decided to bring a noise ordinance. And the noise from a B&amp;B apartment of two days, three days, is going to be a whole lot less than somebody that's there every day. My next-door neighbor, very nice guy, does landscaping, and he has this Dodge that has no exhaust. And he starts up at 5:30 every morning, and it takes him 10 minutes to let it warm up. And he comes home, because he works really hard, he's a young guy, and when he comes home at night, and he's dragging whatever he's dragging, it's loud. That is what happens when you have a long-term apartment. You're, the difference of somebody walking down the street, if they're living there as an apartment, or is living as a three-day thing, Friday through Monday, to go down to go get a pizza or to go get coffee, it's still going to be the same. Actually, it's probably going to be more foot traffic going up and down the street for people, because that's the only place to go get food. Little Sperry though, you'll walk, there's no place to drive, it's not worth driving, there's no place to park either. Just one of those little things.
Thanks, John. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right. With that, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment. That takes us to old business special exception for the vest-in web tourist home. We did hear from the applicant that they do need more time to get an independent evaluation in regards to their septic situation. So I suggest we leave that on the table for this month and hope for additional information on that next month.
Yeah, you know, I was, I noticed that the letter from the Health Department was dated in, in late May. And I wondered why, did they not, did the Health Department not send it to you guys?
I think they forgot to change the date on their letter when they were copying it and pasting. I think that's what happened.
Sometimes the.
But in any case, it was just, it was so last, last minute. It's, I just hope that they can get their act together.
I hope so too, for the applicant, that they can get some clarity there. All right. Well, conveniently, Gary, there's an empty place at the table. Would you like to work us through the updated rules of procedure? Well, there's a microphone and a chair, so it's a lot better than shouting across the room.
It's the Gary corner. I'll make some room for it.
If you just want to blend in, I'll let Michelle continue, but I thought it might be, you know, the fastest, the fastest way between two points is a straight line.
So the General Assembly clarified the rules that you must follow if you want to have electronic participation in meetings. Some of you have taken advantage of that when you're traveling, or maybe you've been sick. They actually changed this last year, which led to the added section, swapped things around. So your policy now refers to 2.23708.2. That should really refer to 2.23708.3, because the .2 is now for emergencies and 3 is kind of the normal sort of things. Then last, this most recent session, they added a whole lot of changes for certain bodies that don't affect boards of supervisors, planning commissions, VCA's, and a few others. So that doesn't matter. But they tacked on to that, that your electronic participation policy has to be reviewed annually and adopted annually. The board supervisors just did this, they basically just pulled up their current policy and looked at it, said, yep, that's still good, and put their stamp on it, said, here's our policy for the next year. So Michelle's gone through your rules of procedure that include your electronic participation policy and provided you with two options. My recommendation, when I sent an email to all the FOIA officers, I did send one to myself for the planning commission, but, was that you might consider, rather than having your own detailed protracted process on how you're going to follow the electronic participation requirements for your body, to simply say, we will follow the board supervisors' policy 830 and use their rules for our rules. And when we do that, just substitute planning commission where it says board supervisors, and when the BOs changes theirs in the future, because the General Assembly fixes more things, then you're automatically, yours would be fixed as well. That's one option for you. I think probably it would still make sense for you to annually have some sort of vote to say, yeah, we still want to do that, because you should have your policy reviewed annually. The other option is to just go into your rules of procedure and change the different parts that need to change to be, to fix the parts that are broken with that code reference, and then keep up with that annually. So you have two options before you. Either one would allow you to align with the state code as it's written.
Thank you.
You know, having typed rules of procedures multiple times with the VCA, I think we should get, take option two.
I think you're right. Is there any further discussion or a motion in regards to these?
Is option two crossing all that out? I'm confused.
No, option two is the one where you said, we're just going to do what the board's doing right.
So option two would delete all the language that's, that was your specific policy and replace it with, you're going to follow the board's policy?
Could I just ask if the policies are materially the same with respect to?
They're very similar. I can tell you that the board of supervisors' policy is written for general efficiency, and you, a member needs to notify the chair, or if they happen to be the chair, they notify the vice chair, if they need to be, need electronic participation for a medical or personal reason. And then you're deemed approved unless there's a motion raised to, you know, challenge that maybe is, it's not appropriate, or you've already done it more than the number of times you're allowed to do it, or something like that.
But if it's, but if it's for personal reasons?
Personal reasons, and there's a limit on the number, but they keep increasing that, so practically it's not an issue anymore.
Right.
But yeah, they're, all of them follow basically the same rules, and you have to apply them uniformly.
Well, I'm willing to move that we, would we be, yes, we would be adopting the procedures as recommended in option two to reference and follow the procedures set forth by the board supervisors.
And I'll second that.
Thank you, Gary. Thank you, Steph. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That takes us on to the contractor's yard amendment discussion. And I welcome any comments on this.
If I could just give a general introduction, I think it might be helpful.
That's great, thanks, Gary.
And I think it can touch a little bit on what some of your comments, comments were. So you, you have a tiered approach right now. There are two different uses in the zoning ordinance to help people, contractors, have a business in the community. You have what's called a small contracting business, parentheses, same lot as residence. You have that. That's the kind of the least intensive use that is available right now. There are several standards included in the ordinance, ordinance in 17062D, and there are various thresholds included in, in those. And I'm just going to flip over to that really quick, because I think it's important. This is already in the code for this small contracting business, same lot as residence. Minimum lot size shall, in general, not a hard and fast rule, be five acres in resource preservation zoning districts, that's ag and conservation. All off-street parking, loading areas, storage and loading areas and storage and structures which are related to such uses shall be located not less than 50 feet from any lot lines. Not more than 10 persons shall be engaged in the onsite operation of the business, including part-time employees or proprietors. Not more than five vehicles or pieces of equipment other than automobiles and light trucks, other than automobiles and light trucks not exceeding 5,000 pounds, shall be operated from the site or stored there overnight. So you can have a bunch of cars and trucks. The area covered by all structures used in conjunction with this, so it's not your garage in your house and that, so if you have a special barn for this business, can't exceed 5,000 square feet, all the structures. The area covered by outdoor storage, and so you, the same sort of categories you'll see kind of repeated in what is proposed for the bigger intense use. The area of covered, covered by outdoor storage in connection with such a use shall not exceed a total of 5,000. All parking, loading, storage shall be effectively screened. That's that, so that came up, I think, in a earlier meeting. What does that mean? This term is used throughout your ordinance. And yes, it's subjective, but these are subjective standards for required special exception that the planning commission, the board supervisors, is going to analyze a, an application, and they're going to review, well, what is your, how are you, how applicant are you going to solve this effective screen? Tell me your plan. And then it's a subjective review and consideration. Well, in this case, that is not going to work. It might work if you're in the middle of a thousand acres, but it's not going to work in this one. Small contracting business shall include uses the following uses, as well as those determined by the board to be sufficiently similar thereto in forms of type, scale, and impact. Construction and repair of buildings, roads, fencing, and utility lines, installation and servicing of heating, cooling, electrical equipment, flooring, painting, plumbing, roofing, tiling, those sort of things you heard about in public comment. Excavating, custom farming not in conjunction with a farming operation. And so if you're a small business owner and you have your excavator and a dump truck, and you park those at your house, you fall under this category. So that's, that's a special exception. Have to come to the planning commission, have to go to the board supervisors, have to explain why their use in their specific parcel meets these standards and is appropriate, and can be, the impacts can be mitigated by some conditions that are attached to, to the special exception. All right, so now if you go back and you think, so that's the small one, has all of those conditions, those special requirements attached to it. What are the special requirements for the big one, the contractor's office shopyard? And you, you look back in that Article VI, and you say, the special requirements for the big one, there aren't any, which means there are no limits. Infinity is the current limit for the number of vehicles, the size of the parcel. It can be as small as you want, as big as you want, you can have as many vehicles, as few vehicles, as much noise, as much light, all the things, there's no cap. It's all subjective. It's all subject to the general standards. And so staff thought, well, that doesn't seem to make very much sense. If the small one has, has some limits, has some gates you have to drive through to even be considered, well, the big one should have some gates you drive through as well. But those gates should be a little, should be bigger than the little. And then we thought, well, you know, not all contractor's yards are the same. We know we have the small one. Probably we should have at least two versions of the big one. And so that's where the level-one and level-two come into play. And so they tried to pick up on the same sort of categories that are considered with special requirements for the small contracting business, but expand them in size and intensity as a ceiling for those. And so we've heard about the 50 vehicles, well, that's a maximum. Someone has to come here and explain why their use of 50 vehicles on their parcel, down their road, in their entrance, with their screening, is appropriate. And if they can convince the, the planning commission through public, and the public through public hearings, that in their special circumstance, that, that 50 is the right number, then they, they might be able to get that through. If they came and asked for six, the answer is no. The maximum's 50. Now, the maximum for a particular parcel that meets all the other requirements might be five. Or it might be five because we're talking about tractor-trailers as opposed to HVAC vans. Or it might be 20 HVAC vans versus, you know, 10 lowboys that are hauling excavators all day long, and they're allowed, or whatever. That's where the subjectivity comes. So it's, there are limits on what you can do for these different categories. So if you look at level-one and level-two, they are incremental increases in intensity from that small one. And the other big issue is, the differentiator is, this can be on the same lot as your residence, but it doesn't have to. Whereas the small contracting business must be on the lot of your residents. This does not necessarily have to be on the lot, it can be. So if you have the large enough parcel, and you happen to live there, that's not disallowed, that's just not a requirement. And so rather than the limits that we talked about before, level-one bumps up to 10 acres, and this is kind of the, the middle ground. There may be other special requirements that you think are, are, are appropriate for this list. The setbacks are not really talked about here, so maybe certain setbacks are important. This does speak about primary highways. In the community, we, you know, this view shed is so important, and the, you know, we, we declare ourselves certain things, right? And so where are all the people? The, you know, 10,000 or 20,000 people a day are on our primary highways. That's where the people are, that's where you see, that's where the visual impact is felt. And that's why this is here. Now, maybe that metric doesn't make sense for these reasons. And so, yes, that does mean, well, if it's not on a primary, that means it's be on a secondary, right? And so everybody says, well, I don't want them on a secondary. Well, if you don't want them on a secondary, you don't want them on a primary, well, then I guess, you know, you have some real tough conversations about whether they're appropriate in the community at all. But if they're going to be in the community, and you want to not have the limits be infinity or zero as they are today, and you want to put some reasonable limits to constrain the type of application that could come in, these are the sort of things that you should consider. And for level-one, they're pretty objective. Level-two expands things, you need more land, but you can have more things. But then it begins to get a little less objective, and basically says, applicant, you're asking for a whole lot. Your use could really have some impacts. We need you to identify what your impacts are, and we need you to submit some plans on how you're going to mitigate those impacts. So then, when you take us to court and you ask us, did you ask us all these things? We said, no, you figured it out, and you told us what your impacts were, and you told us what your solutions were, and quite frankly, we didn't think your solutions to your impacts were appropriate, and therefore we denied your permit. Or we accepted it, and the neighbor comes through, and we have the same conversation, but it's flipped around. So that's why this is set up this way. The numbers certainly are all variables. The 25 acres could be 50 acres or 100 acres, the, you know, number of square feet that you have on the roof, or outside storage, those things can change. You could add things like setbacks that aren't in here. But that's the rationale for how this got to be the way it is, to constrain from what we have now, which is no limits, to some limits.
May I ask a clarifying question?
Always, please, thank you.
Going back a page or two, if I may. On the, the specific matter of the, and I think this applies in more places, but the one that's probably easiest to talk about is this, not more than 50 vehicles. I have been in numerous conversations on this board, or on this commission, where when we see that kind of language in the ordinance, it is, it is not read in the manner that you describe it. It's read as, well, the ordinance says, not more than 50. How could we say you can't have more than 20? Where is that articulated, that general principle of our discretion in circumstances where it's written that way?
So I would argue that, are you compelled to grant a special exception application? to grant a special exception application? Is it all or nothing? No, you, you're allowed to put conditions in place to mitigate impacts. And some of those conditions might be fifty's not the right number. It's twenty. But you would not have the ability to do something that's, is different than not more than.
So the, the general answer to the question, I think, is, and see, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but this seems to be what they're saying. The ordinance puts bounds on us as a body to consider an application. It does not, in this case in particular, put bounds specifically on the application other than we don't have the authority to approve greater than fifty.
Yeah, and I think it would be maybe viewed similarly to some of the ordinances that speak to the density of lodging rooms for a country inn or whatever it is in it. I can't remember the name. So you could, you could have twenty-four, but, you know, hey, that subject system can't handle more than ten. You don't get twenty-four. You don't get the maximum density. There are other constraints in place and limits that need to be put in place, conditions, reasonable conditions, to align the use with the underlying by right use. And that's, you know, ultimately what we're always trying to do with these special exceptions is look at the by right uses and say, well, that just doesn't fit in with the by right uses. There's all these impacts to do this thing that they want to do that are more intense than a by right use. What conditions can we put in place to cut back on those impacts? So that they're aligned with the by right use.
Thank you for that. Could I ask another? This is a little tougher and more opinion-based. But I'm kind of intrigued by this idea that there should be a connection between the stuff you're storing and the thing you're licensed to do.
Oh, yeah. No, I think, and so that is in here.
How is that in?
It's a, a little bit nuanced. And it talks about the equipment that you have has to be connected to what you do, right? And that is trying to get a differentiator from, this is just a place where we like to collect a lot of cool stuff versus, I dig holes and do this. I need hole diggers.
But there's no connection to actually having a license.
No, so that, you could. You could say you need a, a DPOR license and, and your
What license?
Department of Professional Occupation Regulation.
And that is what is
State, DPOR. Same people who give me my PE license gives John his contractor's license in the state. And so you could include some language. Now, not, you know, not everybody who has a dump truck is necessarily a contractor. And there could be, there could be some impact, issues there, but.
Well, I, you know, that was one of my, my questions. It does seem to me you have to define contractor somewhere. And maybe the way to do it is, is this person licensed to do whatever contracting business they're engaged?
Well, for a contractor's office shop yard, the, the, for maybe these, the, the lowest tier business on your residence, maybe you don't need a license. I don't know. But when you get up to the other ones, maybe it's a reasonable requirement to say, if you're going to have this site that's not even associated with your home, you've got to be a licensed contractor. And what you're doing there has to be consistent with that.
Yeah, I agree.
I, I think that's reasonable.
One of, one of the questions that I have and things that I, I know happen in the county is that VDOT will contract with people to clear the roads, especially when there's the snow. And frankly, I want those trucks strategically located throughout the county because if roads don't get cleared quickly, then my phone starts to ring. So I wonder how this kind of language might affect the ability of an organization like VDOT to contract out a necessary service like that. And I would certainly hate for it to make it more cumbersome and expensive and not be able to deliver that service when we need it.
You need a license to contract.
So it might not need to be a contractor's license, but they need a business license of the SEC if you run a dump truck with a plow on it. But there, maybe that is an important differentiator. Maybe it is different whether I park my dump truck at my house and then I have a contract with VDOT and I probably go in the loud or something where I can make real money as opposed to plowing here. But whatever you're doing, that probably should be different than, you know, home occupation than a, this is a ten acre yard with, you know, however many trucks.
Right, and do, do we have that differentiated? Do you think, well, to, to my mind, I don't think we do.
Well, we have the up to fifty. Might be appropriate depending on your sites. You know, if you have this super windy road, then, you know, fifty big giant trucks is probably not appropriate on that road.
Right.
But if you're on Richmond Road, is a secondary, but is much more capable of handling, you know, larger vehicles. And so maybe that road is okay. But we, we have some small contracting type businesses down real small roads, but it's a different, different standard.
Why couldn't we grant an exception to emergency equipment? Because this snow removal is considered to be an emergency operation.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think we can look at anything like that. You also get into, you know, if a certain lot or parcel has been kind of consistently used to store, you know, multiple snow plows for thirty years.
Right.
That's a different sort of thing than it just shows up yesterday.
Well, that gets to my, I'm sorry, I may take more than my share, but I'm surprised at this small number of current ones.
Well, and I think is that contractor's office shop yard, is your matrix of current, does that include the small contracting business? Do we have any of those? When you were looking through the full list?
This is all that came up under
Contractor, we like the word contractor.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, we can't speak for the past. What, you know, who applies for what and when they've done it? And maybe who came in and asked or didn't ask.
But I guess, I, so it's probably reasonable to say that if you're not on this list and you have this storage, you're either grandfathered or non-compliant.
I think those are the options.
Yeah. But I think a lot of them are grandfathered.
Yeah, yeah. And there, and many of these sort of things, it's this gray transition between agriculture and something else.
Mr. Shulman brought up a question. Should this be, I mean, any of these contractors, should it be part of the, they do business in the county? Because
It's a great tax up there.
Yeah, Northern Virginia. So they operate out of here and go do all the snow plows and plow them.
That's the whole of my cringe.
Yeah.
No business personal property tax?
I think it'd be
Tens of thousands of dollars a year per vehicle.
At least we, we get the personal property tax, no business license or anything like that.
They argue that it's business equipment. Using that crane to drive to work.
Good point. Are we really getting over, excited and overworked about these contractor yards? That they may not be so unsightly? And I think that's the key to it, is that the public don't, do not want to see this. But are we getting over, are we reacting, overreacting to a situation that maybe is not, no bar, here is bad. It's really trying to make it to be.
I'd like to react to that, if I may. I do think, you know, we, I was kind of talking about how few are you on this list. But I do think these sort of scenarios with the development, say, of Clevenger's Corner and the encroachment, this is a, the idea that there's lots of space to store stuff out there is something we, is not likely to say is that static. And I tend to agree with, I think, what you're implying that, you know, that this isn't some great problem now, but I would hate to not address it until it is more of one. So I do, I, I, my personal answer is, I don't think it's a big deal for what we have now. But I, I, to the point that you, right now, have more restrictions on a home-based one than on a big, separate one, that does seem like a hole that we wouldn't need to try to bring anybody currently under consideration. But we might want to put some preventive measures in. That's my thought.
Well, one, do you have, one of the questions that I had was, that the, these contractor's offices, yards are permitted in commercial zones and highway commercial. So what we're talking about here, and I'm thinking about primary highway. If you have a lot of trucks, actually, the safest way to get out is on two eleven, right? Or five twenty-two, not on a secondary road. So I'm wondering if we really want to restrict them from being on a primary highway? And whether the issue is whether or not to have them screened as opposed to not permit it? Does it, do you have an opinion about that?
Yes. We are in a primary where, being on two eleven, within your province, ten years. There was a person in this room on that side of the bench who said to me one time while they were on my property, if nine on two eleven, if this shouldn't be nine on two eleven, where would it be? There isn't a place in the county that has that kind of traffic handling ability, more so than that. If we make, when I move the machine over five twenty-two, I call the county deputy to come and help me hold traffic so I can get the machine off the trailer. Because it's dangerous.
Yeah.
That fly out, and I've done this for thirty years. Screening at my place, our equipment starts nine hundred feet off of the road. There are four lines of trees. There are fifty and sixty feet and taller. And there's an elevation change of almost twenty-five feet where you can't see it, even in the middle of the winter. A number of people come there and they go, what is all this about this stuff? I, I see this little stuff here by the house, by the shop. But where's this other stuff? It's way in the back. And I agree, that's where it should be. I'm over two hundred feet from the side of the property to my neighbors. And another three hundred feet from the property line in the back of the property. In fact, we want to bind the neighbors. This is a good idea. But we bought that. Shed, doing something for sightlines and hiding it instead of it looking like, and it was from previous years. Nobody in this room had anything to do with it. But when you go down and you see the businesses that are on two eleven just pass this couple of tree companies, it's a mess. And they're unfortunately unable to do anything with it because there's not enough room for them to move back. If they had been moved back some, if it was a possibility, absolutely. Like, I agree with a setback, screening off of it, and having your home there. Because I heard him say about, you know, cranes and whatnot, and the number of vehicles. I can see a loophole in there that's like a black hole. I'd call up Fairfax Crane Service and tell them, hey, I've got a yard. I'll charge you a thousand dollars a month for you to bring your crane out there. And you could park it there. And it might stay there for six months before they need it. It would fall within these regulations. And I don't want to see that. There, there are lots of ways around it. But it should be that the equipment that's there should belong to the person that lives there. Because they're going to take care of it. Their permit is valuable. It's like my, my, my tractor trailer license is valuable to me for almost forty years now. Because I have a tractor trailer license, I'm only allowed to have half the alcohol level as a regular person, even if I'm driving my car. And I have been driving over thirty years, so it doesn't matter. But I make sure I don't have speeding ticket. I don't have a parking ticket. I have had no equipment tickets in over thirty years. Because it's important to me. The contractor's, our permit would be important to me. And I would make sure that I didn't have those kind of problems that other people, other captains has addressed, that it could get out of hand. I have a legal company that comes once a month to empty mine with the order line. It's an EPA-approved double wall paint. I can hit it with a tractor trailer at thirty miles an hour and it won't leak. Mr. Curry saw it the other day as the truck was coming in to empty. It is the same company that the county uses for its two landfill storage containers. These are the things that are unsightly and problematic. And why, I, as a representative of the, of the business industry in this county, I don't want to see it in my neighbor's place. I don't want to see it at my place. I want to see it appropriately placed and screened. I've gone with my lowboy to move him the machine three or four times a year at the moment. And I'm the only one. I'm the only one who has a tractor trailer license. My son does not. And it's just me, my son, my wife, and two others. That's it, that's the whole county. If I go file for VDOT, which I gave up a year ago, I have to have a license. They want to come and look at my equipment. I have to have a DOT license if I take a dollar. Otherwise, the truck has to say not for hire. These are the things that make difference. There are places in this county where you drive down and somebody's doing snow plowing. There are old trucks that don't work anymore and they're sitting right out on the road. And VDOT has stopped using trucks over the year of two thousand because of that, bad conditions. Special uses where they were able to run with farm plates before. They've stopped it. And from a visual standpoint, when you drive down the road and they're mostly on secondary roads and whatnot, where somebody was trying to supplement their income in the winter time, or a snowstorm, they're helping to do this, I'm going to use my farm tractor to clear roads. You won't have that because of screening. You won't see those dump trucks.
Anyone else wishing to have public comment at this time? We really need to be even-handed. If one member of the public has an opportunity to speak off turn, we really need to hear from everyone that might be interested in speaking.
I just have one comment to add.
Yes, sir.
I don't think contractors are going to be interested in coming to Rappahanna County to stage their equipment when they're working in Northern Virginia. Doesn't make good sense. Too expensive to haul all that equipment back. These little, little plowboys, which I don't think is a problem. Yes, they drive their snow equipment out of Pullins Hollow, O'Hollow, and go to Loudoun County. But to me, that, we're overreacting to something that's not, not
I just have to say, I want everybody with a plow or we have a snow event, because I don't think driving in that stuff. But Karen, yes, ma'am?
I was trying to be clear to Mr. Atkins' point. I disagree. All you have to do is drive down Route two eleven in Culpeper County in that old garage site. And I've talked with, with the zoning administrator from Culpeper for three years about that, okay? And they are construction from out of county. This ain't their first rodeo where they've done this. There's a lawsuit over that. Just this week, there have been additional vehicles and stuff, and that's been going on for years. And he does work other places, uses as a dump site, stores his stuff there. So have some, we think it can happen here. The second point I'd make. And it's resolved now that there was an instance on Seven Ponds Road years ago with B and E, or B and S site excavating where they grew their business way beyond their primary residence where they're located. They did have VDOT contracts. They were flatbed They were flatbed. Tractor trailers rolling in and out of there at 3:30 and 4:00 in the morning. And that was addressed, took a while, but yes. So, no, absolutely, this can be a problem out here. We are crying for that.
Yeah, I am aware of a situation where a very inventive solution was proposed to bring a lot of equipment and from out of the county. Let's put it that way. Yes, Nita?
I'll probably back up Karen one more very much because I spend most of my time in Fairfax during when it's too hot or too cold. And I do read the local papers and I listen to the news and I talk to my board of supervisors' office every now and then, pay attention to them over there. Yet, it's too expensive to buy some land in Fairfax for one of these yards. And of course, they have the same problem. They've got to have it in the right place, et cetera, et cetera. So they're moving further out. They've got to, these big places, because they could sell every piece of property they have and they're using for something really big on the day of summer. And then move further, upgrade their whole business further out. And of course, all you have to do is watch the traffic from Culpeper going into, going in the direction of Fairfax on any day, that there's lots of businesses that it's worth their time and effort to live someplace or keep their equipment someplace that's cheaper than coming to Fairfax. My homeowners association hires a couple of guys, some small business that's out of Culpeper, because I've chatted with them, and they come around and kind of pick up the trash that the trash company won't pick up. Like the paint cans and the tires and stuff like that. So we call them in literally every week to go around that subdivision of 600 some houses to pick up the Flotsam and Johnson show. We call it all the time, but I've chatted with them and they're down in Racineville.
Thank you, Nita. Anyone else that wishes to speak? All right. Any other thoughts?
I would just say, I think that was a very good conversation. I do, I tend to think that, I don't think we should categorically rule out primary roads. It seems to me there's a solution here, which is to emphasize the need for visual screening wherever they are, appropriate to the site. And they're coming in anyway, we can deal with that. So I tend to, I tend to agree that that is an unnecessary restriction to that, to that use. To the point about the small ones, it seems that really we're not doing anything here that, unless I'm mistaken, that would significantly change what we're talking about for the small ones. They're already more heavily regulated than the hypothetical large ones. So I just want to recalibrate us back to the original problem statement.
Right, to level, to level one and level two.
Yeah.
Well, as long as we are doing these regulations, it would be good to require downward shielded lighting in compliance with dark skies.
Well, I mean, we have heard, just working through level one, we have heard feedback a minimum, about the minimum lot size. Do we think the minimum lot size should be higher than 10 acres?
So if you recall, the small one was generally five acres in ag and conservation. While the, and Ms. Ritter's brought this up before, why many or any of these are allowed in conservation is beyond me. They should probably just not be allowed in conservation.
Well, I mean, that was going to be one of my suggestions because I know we heard that about something as simple as transient lodging. This would certainly seem to be even beyond that. So I would suggest we remove it from conservation, too. You all want to strike in bounded buyer view of a primary highway?
I'd like to, as long as we have the, you know, the proper view.
So I would suggest if the planning commission has certain concepts, then, you know, we can, staff can work on some words to deliver those concepts. So if it's, primary highways are fine, just make sure there's a, you know, whatever foot setback, you can figure out the number to put in there anytime. It can be XXX. And then effective screening, we can work on that language. And then you can fine-tune things rather than getting caught up in the commas and whatnot.
Right.
Great idea.
Well, I would just say then, I mean, I think you all need to work through that and the frontage, the setbacks, and screening in a way that makes sense and also for setbacks in a way that ramps up for level two in a logical way.
I would say also, concept that I felt like I was pretty cool with and people were agreeing with is to tighten up the licensing requirement on the larger ones. Connect to the use.
For level two?
For the level, at least level two.
Level one and two, but not necessarily small.
No, no.
Which doesn't suggest that it changed at all in any sense.
Right, yeah. Again, my focus is on the missing regulations now.
I was thinking also that at least for level two, that all of the, it should be screened from the, all the, not only the neighbors but also the road.
I think they both should.
Yeah.
50 vehicles on site for level one?
We talked a little bit about that. It is, it is a maximum. I have the concern about the ease of misinterpreting, but I am satisfied by Mr. Curry's answer to my question. I do think with respect to these things like setback and screening and lot size and numbers, it's very hard to create a one-size-fits-all. And that's the beauty of the special exception permit. If we address the matter of limiting the number of vehicles, limiting, you know, providing screening, providing setbacks, I think we should preserve the flexibility to set conditions for the property.
Okay.
And that'll keep us from over or under, you know, trying to imagine every scenario.
To be clear, this is speaking of vehicles and pieces of equipment combined.
Right.
Where a piece of equipment has the definition, so it might be 20 vehicles and 10 widgets or whatever.
Or to tillers or whatever.
And then about the environmental protections, is that, I mean, it does seem that we should put some in, or is that not to begin our daily work?
Well, it's in two right now. There's, could we, could you point us to that language?
Yeah, I'm looking.
We could sport the head, isn't it?
There may be some state code that we could point at.
So it's nine on the very last page, you know, must include light, noise, dust, fur, and fume, smoke, odors mitigation plan, as well as plans for on-site oppression, chemical spills, emergency mitigation plan. So you tell us what you got and tell us how you're going to control it.
I would say we could include that same language for level one, but instead of must, make it may.
And you can't make it number nine also.
Yeah, and then we'll just put it on the radar and then people, people will, people will say, well, it's not a must, it's a may. And in the, in the instance of your application, we do find this to be something that we, that we require.
I agree with that.
Me, too.
I do think there is also a hole relative to commercial entrance that is consistent with whatever you're bringing in and out. So that needs to get addressed.
Yeah.
And the concept of calling the law enforcement to help you move your vehicle out, that's great, but that should not be allowed. You should be able to get them out of the place easily.
It wasn't coming out of my place. It was on lower than my floor.
No. But even your place is tricky. You've had to back trucks in and do weird things.
I have all the driveway that's ready.
Need a permit for that.
All right. Well, I think that's good. How about setbacks? You all are going to work up language for setbacks?
Yeah, if that's the concept you want, then we'll kind of just leave it with the, the number can be blanked.
And then, well, I think we should kind of follow the logic that we do for houses or hay bale signs, which is what, 100 feet for a house or a hay bale sign?
Well, it's 200 feet for anything off of 211.
Okay, great.
About 100 feet otherwise.
Good.
Have we addressed?
I don't know if that's far enough for this.
Well, I would say two and four will work just fine for me.
You can fill the numbers in easily.
Have we addressed what is considered to be appropriate screening?
Well, I think it is, the nature of, of these, all these special requirements come into play only in the situation of there being a special exception. And in those case, that's an application to the planning commission board supervisors with them explaining why what they are proposing is effective. And it leaves you and the public to review and determine whether, in fact, it is effective in mitigating that impact. Now, you could try to say you need a berm or you need vegetation, you need trees on this kind of spacing, but you're trying to be so objective is really tricky on this sort of thing.
Okay, I agree with that. I'm not a contractor. I'm not a friend necessarily of a contractor. I have no business with contractors necessarily. But when we're handing out the medicine, I think we need to be fair and equal with everyone. Yes, we're talking about contractors' yards now, but we have other businesses in this county on primary highways that action needs to be, they need to get the same medicine delivered to them that contractors' yards are. They're unsightly, they're unhealthy, and nothing gets done with it.
Anyone else or anything further we should ask staff to take up at this time?
I think that's good.
Yeah. All right. Next item on the agenda is the ordinance work on transient lodging. Staff want to kick this off as well, or? What's yours?
I ignore what Fogg here's got here because they're having some work sessions tomorrow, new text amendments. I plan on going to that just to see what there's.
Oh, good.
Holliday was supposed to call today, but she got busy.
Please tell her I said hi.
So just like the last topic, there are different, there are different types of transient lodging uses in your current code. And, I know it's small, but it's on board docs. So Ms. Summers has pulled from the ordinance the various types of lodging that we have. So bed and breakfast, you also have tourist home, which is, you know, that has to be rated all to one group of people. Bed and breakfast, you have conference center or resort, not to be confused with conference center, which doesn't allow lodging, which, you know, that's just really confusing. Country inn, retreat or lodge, hotel motel, and then there's the tourist home. So you have all these different uses. And when you start to look at it, they are nested in some ways where the occupancies start to stack on top of each other. It's not really clear in many ways, but if you look, you can see the zoning districts where they're allowed by right or by special exception. You can see the acreage required if there is a requirement, and you can see the occupancy limits in people, in rooms, and how that's determined. And then just the definition. So, you know, is there a way to, and some work was done on this like four or five years ago to begin to think about it. I think, and I think the thought then was, hey, let's get the main amendments done. And then maybe we could, we could come back and look at this.
But we did change bed and breakfast.
Changed a few things, added those conditions for tourist home. You really, you hit the real sore points. But are there some other areas? And one of the big things here is that, like we just said, in the zoning districts, you can see a bed and breakfast, a conference center, a resort, a country inn, and a tourist home are all allowed in the conservation zoning district. Does that make sense? They're allowed in ag. Well, I mean, that's, I don't know what percentage of the county's ag, but it's a pretty big number, right? So if you, now, commercial, some of these make sense in commercial and some of them don't. And we talked about that with a recent application. A hotel or motel is by definition transient lodging in a commercial area. And you can see it's by right in commercial village and commercial general, and then a special exception in highway commercial. You can't even apply for one in a residential zone or a resource preservation zone. Whereas a country inn or a conference center resort, you can't do one of those in a commercial zone. You can only do that in conservation or ag zone. And they're, you know, by nature and by definition, they're lodging not in a commercial area. And so if that's the case, then the special requirements for those should align. And so if you're going to put a bunch of lodging out in the country somewhere in the ag, well, then there should be talking about needing a certain amount of acreage and setbacks and a certain density of rooms per acre to make sure you're not overtaxing the land, where that sort of thing just wouldn't be totally appropriate if you're in a commercial zone. And so you come at them differently. But the bottom line, you have several different uses, and they fit together different ways. And the body needs to think about whether this is the right breakdown and the right way to thread them together. Are there gaps between some? Do we really need all of them? You know, should they be in different, allowed in different zones in different ways, whether it's by right or special exception? All of that is up for, you know, the planning commission input and ultimately board consideration after hearing from the public.
Could you confirm again the difference between conference center or resort and country inn, retreat or lodge? Because looking at the definition on the matrix, it's the same and I don't.
No, one's more and one's less.
Right, but the definition is the same.
No, one is for less than.
Oh, okay.
For more than 40, and the other is for up to.
I missed that.
So we draw a boundary at 40.
Yeah, and so if you, you get a country inn, but if you want to get a really big country inn, we stop calling it a country inn. This thing's a conference center or resort.
Okay.
And which means there's probably higher liberal scrutiny and the community's really going to get intense about it and you better have the right, the really, really right place for it.
So when I look at this matrix, what I think of in regards to recent applications, and as I recollect, some of that work was done with tourist homes. And then we set this aside largely to concentrate on the comprehensive plan. And that was like the great push to get the comprehensive plan done and then come back and pick up the ordinance work, which, of which this is now a part. So to my mind, I look at for inconsistencies, and I think one of the things I've heard lately is taking pretty much all of these uses, certainly the more intense ones, again, out of conservation districts.
Yeah, I agree.
Especially the country inn and the country inn or the conference center or resort. I think those should come out of conservation. I think the other inconsistency that jumps out at me is if we are saying tourist homes need to be on a paved road or type two road, we certainly should have something there for bed and breakfast and conference center and country inn. Hotel or motel sort of cures itself due to the zoning districts it's allowed in. It's only allowed at so many places.
Bed and breakfast and tourist home are combined in that regard, but the other two are not.
Yeah, okay. So, so I think that that jumps out at me, and frankly, when, when that was brought up about asking to remove that word recently, I kind of breathed a sigh of relief when that went away because this is, this is not very consistent. And then the minimum acreage, I think we need to look at that as well and try to have that be more consistent throughout the matrix. And that's another thing we heard on the recent application as well, that the acreage was simply not high enough. And certainly the setbacks are a bad joke and need to be increased and consistent between the uses.
I certainly agree with all that. I think, again, I would suggest. I, I think, again, I would suggest that we ask staff to do something similar to work up something that is sort of logically, you know, stepped up with the different intensities. I, I personally, I think, to me, in the, in terms of the use categories, hotel motel's the odd one, but like you said, it's so obscure, and I'm not quite sure why it's here, but it doesn't bug me that much. Um, and we dealt with bed and breakfast and tourist home, and the real gap is that we kind of punted conference center, resort and country inn.
Yeah, right.
And what we need to do most urgently is step those up to, you know, incrementally commonsensical standards that's tied, that pick up where the tourist home and bed and breakfast leave off. Cause they're clearly more intense use. So I think I'm just generally restating and agreeing with you in a different way, I believe. Um, the other thing that I hadn't heard here, and I know, ugh, it was a painful exercise, but when we finally track down where new construction buildings to be used for transient things don't count as dwelling units for the purposes of our zoning amendment, is, is that in our county code?
Well, that's in the definition of what a dwelling unit is.
Yeah, I, I think we should be revisiting that because I don't think anybody envisioned, with whatever that exception was, the kind of construction of these separate little pods becoming a, you know, I, I think that was a, a near miss because we had other issues with it, but I think that if we're, I, I, I think when it comes to the new construction of these things, this, this idea of getting around some of these things on a big parcel by just building a bunch of small things that somehow then don't contribute to the dwelling seems like a mistake, and, and I, I feel like we should bring that into this conversation.
And I think the, uh, one way to look at it is you have this layer of by right development, and that allows you to have the dense, maximum density of dwelling units, which is basically residential dwelling unit. One per 25 acres in ag. And that's by right kind of level. But then there's the, but I want to do these other things that aren't by right, whatever is, contractors yard or one of these things. It's, it's a scenario that might fit on my parcel or might not. It might have impacts that are really incongruent with the surrounding area, and it just, there's no way we can make it work. Or you could put a bunch of little buildings on there because it's a thousand acres or whatever. It, it doesn't meet the one per 25 if you want to talk about a dwelling, but it also doesn't have impacts to the community in a way that is, is bad. And so that's why it's a special exception. It's not by right.
Yeah.
You don't get to exceed some density by right. You have to come in and say, this is a special case. I know it's not the by right, it's not the standard, it's not just walk through, go to Michelle, pay $50, get my permit. It's a, this is a different situation. Let me explain to you why it's okay and why my conditions are going to mitigate the impacts. Now, if they turned into full-time residential dwellings, that's where things get weird because now you might be violating that density, and the answer would be, well, it's a violation.
Well, I, you know, if you get but for that provision that excludes them, up to that point, those yurts that we were looking at, you know, they were livable all the time. They had all the facilities. They otherwise met the definition of a dwelling unit, but for the fact that it said, for purposes of this ordinance, we're not counting those as dwelling units.
Well, it's curious, just like the.
All we could, oh, that would have been fixed just by taking that out. I don't see what that exclusion is buying us for, for that kind of new construction. Like you said, they could still come in and do it, but that tied our hands in a, in a weird way.
It's kind of like the family apartment. Now, that's gone from the ordinance, right? Been removed, been replaced with ADU because it was thought that the restriction on the family was, you know, maybe wasn't needed, there's, you can handle it, just have an accessory. But that, that allowance to have a long-term rental or no rental, just have somebody in there, no, no cost.
Yeah.
That kind of exceeds the density, right? But it's a special exception allowed because it's not, you know, that, that thing, right? And it's allowed. You, you've come in, you've made your case that this extra thing, it's not the by right, it's not the one per 25, it's the extra thing. Um, and it's similar for these, and it is inappropriate for all sites. And there are a lot of reasons why it might or might not be. If you had 40 rooms or people or whatever's on the matrix and it's down this windy gravel road up a mountain, that may be not a good idea.
Yeah.
But if it is, you know, right off of one of your big roads and they have the, they're the only people that use that entrance, and they're the only people that use that road, and they're a thousand feet away from anybody else, then maybe it is okay. And so those are the sort of things you need to think about as you're setting up these special requirements, that these are the hard limits, and everything else we can figure out when we look at your actual application and consider the impacts on the neighborhood.
Well, to me, the, the other, the, the reason that that dwelling unit exclusion troubles me is it very clearly created a, a possible consequence that I don't think is ever envisioned, that you could build lots of small things and call it a, a resort or something that was probably envisioned as one big thing and imagined in that way. And, and the point of that being, okay, so maybe these were, you know, plastic yurts that would be year-round dwellings, but you, why, they could have been, they could have also been more thoroughly constructed, and then you're creating a situation where now you've got these things built that, you know, we didn't intend to have built because there was this opening, and then we're back to the situation tonight where, oh, now it's built.
It seems like the impacts would be similar. Why is it any different than, I don't know, somebody, some time in the past thought it made sense.
Somebody got creative.
If you took the kitchens out of the yurt, uh, would that solve the problem?
Well, you can do, right now, an accessory use, an allowable accessory use is a guest house. You can do it by right today.
But where, that, the oddity is that those, is the exception is so broad. It's an odd exception. There's very few places that I've nor have anything like that in our code. It can't, I mean, maybe it has to be clarified that, I think the point of it was, was, is it in the transit?
That's the definition, that's the definition of dwelling. So I think, I mean, if, if the community and the Planning Commission, speaking for the community here in the community, thought that you can only do a country inn if you meet that relying density, and we're going to count your rooms, and if you don't meet one per 25 fits ag, then you don't, you can't do it.
Well, I, I'm defined with dwelling.
I don't think that that's a problem.
Well, I think the distinction is the units of a, of a single building, you know, they're not as separate. I mean, I, I, I don't know, that, that's the part that, that took that.
So for country inn, it talks about, you know, lodging units as measured in this, that, or thing, including like tent sites. I mean, it talks about these, it, it conceives that these things may be fragmented and scattered around. Whether that's what you want today, I don't know, but that's what somebody wanted one time in the past, and they might have borrowed it from the next county.
A big problem is more of an, a visual impact than several smaller.
Maybe you can tuck these in the trees, you know? Somebody's far away, can't see, you should have a lot of cars get to it from it.
It is tricky, and trying to think of how to avoid those unintended consequences. And I, I agree with Mr. Light on that, uh, what was it, an eco resort, uh, application? That, um, I mean, I, I think these folks were well-intentioned, but having that, those kind of structures literally, littering a.
Conservation zone.
A conservation zone, and, um, if the business doesn't make it, then, then what happens? That's, that's very problematic.
Yeah, we, we, we've kind of dealt with that piece if we get, if we fix the, those two, but doesn't fully address this idea of building something for one purpose with the ultimate intention of being another. And I don't think you can do that as easily with one construction, but this idea that you can somehow propagate a bunch of little houses and call them rooms in a resort and thereby circumvent our entire density condition seems problematic.
You have the odd situation in Sperrill right now where somebody's able to build the tourist home by right in the commercial village zone, but it cannot be a house, a residential dwelling unless they come and ask for a special exception. It's, it's odd.
Yeah.
It's, it's a disconnect, but it is what, it's what's in the code.
What's in the code, but that's why we should revisit it.
Yeah, so the same sort of thing here is if you have a family apartment, yeah, you can rent that for more than 30 days. Can I rent it for less than 30 days? No, no. And if it's a tourist home, you can rent it for less than 30 days. Can I rent it for more than 30 days? No. Well, I mean, come on. And so I guess somebody could get a permit for both, and they could rent for more or less, and that's, you know, they could do whatever they want to do.
Yeah.
If, if those impacts are acceptable.
All right, so it sounds like you all have some good direction on these. Does anyone have anything else on the transient housing? And a lot of thanks to Gary and Michelle for putting together the matrix and the permits database for, um, for ins that already exist because, um, many times seeing what's already in existence, um, shapes my idea of what is appropriate because it shows me what's been approved and denied in the past.
I need to make sure that's all, Michelle. No, I didn't, but I need that.
That's right, you are on vacation. Thank you, Michelle. Um, all right, that takes us to data center amendment discussion. And this is something that came up last month. I think, Mr. Shuland, you have brought it up initially?
Sure. Yes. I think it's something we should discuss.
Well, and I'll just say that I talked to staff about it, and I think we have a couple of approaches at our disposal. Gary, did you want to talk about it?
Well, um, they're not allowed.
I try not to talk all the time.
Yeah, they're not allowed. You can't do them. Now, could somebody look at the ordinance and say, well, my, my use of a data center is kind of similar to that use that you allow? And if you squint and you turn your head, you know, what a warehouse to you is a data center to me, so I'm doing a warehouse.
It's part of my country inn.
Right, it's part of my country inn. And so, um, so you could look at your uses that are allowed in different districts. Warehouse, for example, is one. Uh, now, it's got really limited use, it can be in commercial or industrial, um, just isn't a lot of that around, and not a lot of acreage of that around, so require someone to come in and rezoning anyway. Um, but you could look at a definition, if there happened to be a definition for warehouse in your, uh, ordinance, which is not. Um, there's a use, uh, it would just go by the standard dictionary definition for a warehouse. Uh, so you could, as a protective measure, create a definition for warehouse or other uses in your use table that you think, you know, somebody could try to make the case that, that a data center could fit into this use. And you could create that definition, a warehouse is a this, that, the other thing. It is not a data center as defined by whatever. And you, you could, you could kind of put a roadblock in those sort of ways by modifying definitions, make clear this is not one of those things. Uh, yes, we allow you to have a warehouse in these limited areas, and maybe there's some restrictions, but it isn't. This, let's help you understand what it is and isn't. Um, I wouldn't recommend doing really anything other than that. If you add a definition and you add it as a use, and you say they are allowed as a special exception, and then put a bunch of rules in, you're inviting somebody to come submit an application meeting those rules.
Yeah.
And then if they do, you're in real trouble.
Yeah.
If they can jump through the hoops.
Yeah.
Uh, then it's, gets really hard to say no.
I think that's totally right. I'm just, I think anything we do, uh, maybe, you know, warehouse, we get, even defining a warehouse, um, I guess, I guess we could do it so.
I guess the other question about this to me is, could there, is there not also a potential small opening under the kind of telecommunications?
Well, telecommunications is dealing with towers, so I don't think so. Um, there is a section in your code that gets into things you can't do, and I guess you could arguably try to put something in there. I think that as far as picking fights and, you know, just saying just flat out, we prohibit all solar farms, or that, and then you're just saying, inviting people to come, waste it. What do these people do? And so maybe that's not the best way forward, but just to clarify, no, I mean, there's a ton of things in, that aren't uses that are provided for in our zoning law. All kinds of things that we don't even talk about, and you just can't do. We're not going to go into definitions and say you can't do all of those things.
Yeah.
And that's why zoning ordinances are set up this way and not the other way, where you can do anything you want except for these things we say you can't do. Because there are too many things on, in the world that someone could walk in and say, well, yeah, we've got this fishing plant, we're going to put it in, it says, it doesn't say you can't do those, so we're going to do it. And so you, you say all the things you're allowed to do, and if I don't say you're allowed to do it, then you can't do it. So then you have to worry about the gray areas where somebody might try to get creative with one of the uses in your table. So you go through all those uses in your table, and you say, well, where could this be misconstrued in a way that we want to be really sure?
This does not.
And really careful that that thing that's listed in the use table that's allowed in com- in commercial or industrial or conservation or whatever it is, uh, if there's any way that somebody can look at and say, hmm, maybe you want to put a definition on that to clarify.
So you're recommending, it sounds like, either nothing or that? Is that a fair summary?
Yeah, and I don't think you'd draw a ton of attention if you just say, uh, you know, warehouses is a warehouse people, uh, as opposed to saying, we do not allow.
Yeah, right.
I totally agree.
Well, but are you going to, I could see a, a little bit of a slippery slope in the, what, what would that be? Doesn't include data center?
Yeah.
Then you got to define data center.
Yeah.
I mean, you, you could do it by its attributes, you know, doesn't have, you know, doesn't require backup power generation or something? I mean, I think you'd have some indirect ways to chop it off that wouldn't require defining a thing that you're trying to avoid talking about.
And you also get into a situation where, where, okay, warehouse doesn't include data center, it didn't say it doesn't include, you know, gaming center, right? It doesn't include this, so they didn't say it didn't include those things, so I guess I can do that thing, and it just, it's just really, in my mind, we're good. But, you know, if we want to do something for the sake of doing something, that's where I would go.
I mean, I do, I do think it is worthwhile to do something.
Well, and you could say, define the data center exactly what it is, and say, we only allow it in industrial, it's permit, or, you know, special exception there only, and that is limited by how, how much acreage is available there anyways? And where is it? Right smack dab in the middle of the county, where there is no infrastructure to support that kind of thing anyways? Say, here's the perfect place for it, that we'll let you have it. We know you don't want it because it's, it's a bad place. Yeah, I don't know, you're inviting somebody to come in and submit a rezoning request. I want to turn this 20 acres, 50 acres into industrial, uh, right here in the middle of nowhere for this use that you say is a use that's provided for, that just can get the zoning.
I think we do have a concern.
You're telling me, in this county, somebody's going to apply for rezoning to industrial?
They're not going to be from here.
Well, it's going to happen here.
Yeah, someone's going to have a.
Where would that happen?
Well, I mean, that's the tactics.
I can tell you where it's going to happen. It will happen in Jackson District, Amesville, where ripe, they're ripe for, for development there. You're on, you're on the borderline with Calhuppa County.
Yeah.
Things are happening, coming closer. Amesville has some, Pop Jones has large tracts of land, folks.
I agree.
So that, no, I don't think there's a, there's an issue on up in Chestnut Gap. I don't think that here in, out of Spurville, no. Amesville, there is.
Yeah, I, I think the further you get away from the park and the closer you get to larger populations, the, um, slipperier the slope gets, which would, would take me in the direction of Amesville. I think you're right, Tommy.
Yeah, and you know, we, I, I think we all agreed that we don't want Loudoun County here, we don't want Fairfax out here, and I personally didn't want the town of Wharton out here.
I'm not going to get involved in women.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. I don't want the town of Wharton here, but it is here, right up here in the limits. It's been brought to Little Washington. Town of Wharton.
A big difference.
On the black kittle. It's there.
The big difference is, say, for Fauquier, for example, they have data centers allowed by right in cer- certain areas, Vin Hill, and they're now. by right in certain, certain areas, Vin Hill, and they're now beginning to say, you know, maybe they should be a special exception. So we're a step beyond that. We don't even, even talk about it. It's just not a use in our use table. They have it in their use table and it says, E, right? And they don't do exactly the same we do, but, I mean, this is a totally different conversation. We're light years away from that, not only the fact that they need a lot of power and stuff that we just don't have.
I think.
Well, Pepper wants it.
I mean, if we can find a way to hide it, then there's a lot of money comes out of it, but.
There's a department, Campbell's Field.
Even cities want it.
I think we're in a good spot.
Just a small one, just a small one.
So maybe review the definitions and the use table and think on this for next month and decide if, if that's, which, which is the approach we want to take on this, and, you know, we made a lot of good progress tonight on the other two ordinance items, so I hope everybody feels good about where we're at with this, and we can come back together on this next month.
Absolutely.
Sounds good.
Sounds good to me.
All right, well, thank you, everyone. We start, we have the list of direction from the board supervisors, who are, of course, all aware of these other ordinance items we're working on. Takes us to roundtable discussion. Does anyone have anything to add? Yes, Mr. Shuland.
I believe when you were citing 1766 K3, which says, in residential and resource preservation zoning districts, any buildings to be constructed shall not be more than two stories and have the exterior appearance of a single-family residence and normal residential, residential accessory structures.
Right.
This building wasn't constructed, it was renovated, wasn't it?
I understand that, yeah.
Here's another question. Why was a agricultural structure built in the middle of residential village?
I think it, I think when that built barn was built, it wasn't residential, right? I think that was still agricultural.
The barn was old.
The barn was that old.
Yeah, it's a very, it's a very old barn.
Get in here.
So it is.
Not anymore, it's not.
Wow.
A brain barn.
The, the original structure was a very old barn.
I think the only thing that we wrote down was some of the concrete. I think they took it, tore it pretty much all down.
We did, yeah.
As long as I remember.
So, I mean, I, I say that in, in regards to maybe the character of the building, you know, because it is.
As far as repurposing.
Well, I stand by my other statements about the close proximity and the, and we didn't even touch on the water not having a potable sample, so I mean, there's a lot going on with that application.
Yeah.
All right. Anything else? All right, everybody. Motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All right, thank you. Everybody in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you very much.